We'll pass the bar, one of you guys will say the invocation.
That's fine.
All right.
As soon as we get up here, we'll be ready to go. So I can put this in. This is. And we are live, so question?
All right. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'll go ahead and call this Tuesday, April the twenty first public meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. I want to welcome everybody at home and thank you for tuning in and welcome everybody here in person as we go through this meeting. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Pastor Crowell will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put your heads with me. Well, Father God, first of all, just with a real heart of thanksgiving that I'm grateful to be here with the Commissioners again. Thank you, Father, for continuing to work through them even at the time that we have been absent and now with people being back, Father, help them to adjust back to them, continue to use them, each and every one of them, as a blessing for this region. We thank you for them, Father, and ask your leading and your guidance and your blessing on them. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Knoll, are there any additions, corrections, or changes to public meeting agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the public meeting agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, or concerns to minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, minutes approved by mutual consent. All right, the first order of business, we have an update on COVID-19 from Bob Stevens from Garrett County Health Department. Bob, thanks for joining us as always, what do you got for us?
Had to turn my mic on.
There you go.
So, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be before this group again. Just give you a brief update on some, just some of the numbers. So far, we've had nineteen hundred and fifty-two cases, over thirty-seven thousand people, or thirty-seven thousand tests have been given for COVID and that's about, I think, twelve thousand people have been tested, unique individuals have been tested within Garrett County. Our case rate right now is fourteen point eight and that's up from around four point eight just a week ago and the positivity rate is six point eight nine, that's higher than the state, that's the first time it's been higher in in probably six weeks. The, kind of, the reason for that, we really believe is that the variant has finally gotten to Garrett County, it already hit other counties, so it's this B-117, which is from Great Britain. It's been, it takes about three weeks to get the sequencing done on a case that they suspect might be the variant and in Allegheny County just today, they determined that they had one case that they were suspect of and it turned up positive but it was from three weeks ago is when that sample was collected, so we believe that that variant is here in Garrett County and that's why, one of the reasons the numbers are going up. So far, we've had sixty-one deaths and the percentage of people who have been vaccinated is thirty-three point eight. That's over ninety-eight hundred people in Garrett County have received the vaccine. The the one thing to report to you all is that we're beginning to see, you know, fewer people take the vaccine. Several months ago, I reported that Garrett County was the first county to get fifty percent of the eighty-five-year-olds vaccinated and then I think we were also the first one to get to pass that threshold for sixty-five-year-olds but we're only at seventy percent of our seniors have been vaccinated and when you compare that to Howard County, who has eighty-five percent, it really shows you that it's not that people can't get the vaccine, we're having people who are hesitant. I want to say that, you know, the first thing that I want to make really clear is we have gotten some, we have great volunteers in this community who are volunteering to help us with vaccinate and we have a lot of different groups that have come together to make that work. And it's not just the Health Department, it's Mountain Laurel and the pharmacies as well as the Wellspring and Garrett Regional Medical Center, so we have a lot of people that are doing the vaccinating. One thing I would like to let people know is that we found out just a couple of days ago that Walgreens in Oakland has the Pfizer vaccine. That's the only place in Garrett County that has that and that's particularly important if somebody has a child who's sixteen or seventeen years old because they can receive that vaccine because it is approved for sixteen to seventeen-year-olds. The rest of us that have the Moderna vaccine right now, we don't it's only approved down to age eighteen. So just to let you know, kind of, within the next three weeks, you're going to see a lot, a lot more opportunities for people to be vaccinated. We're going to continue, the Health Department in our site at Medco vaccinating on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We still have appointments for this Thursday and we had a vaccine clinic there today and for the first time ever, we, all the appointments were not full. But we're also working with the state to have a clinic that's going to be set up in the Southern Industrial Park at the in the parking lot of the GCC Technology Building and that's going to begin next Tuesday and it's going to be Tuesday through Saturday for two weeks in a row, thousand doses, two hundred doses a day and it will be from eleven until seven. So, you know, a lot of folks that if they work, you know, during the day, that hopefully they'll be able to get it at that seven o'clock appointment. Our appointments at Medco is at nine. All of these facilities that are vaccinating, the vaccine is free. And then, and they'll be doing that on Saturdays as well. We're also working with EMS and the state to have a GoVax teams deployed. I believe it's the week of May fourth and we're going to target the communities where we get a breakdown that shows the communities that do not have as many people vaccinated there percentage-wise. So an example of that is two of our lowest right now is is Bloomington and Friendsville, they're outlying communities and so we'll be able to go to their fire departments and if the fire departments will host us, we'll be able to take the vaccine to them. And so the, really, the within the next three to four weeks, everybody that really has access issues or difficulty with getting a vaccine, they'll be to the point where everybody will be able to have the vaccine. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is the and just take this as an opportunity because I know the media covers this and people watch this to see what's going on with the county, but this is my opportunity to say, to talk about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine a little bit. The Johnson and Johnson vaccine was paused by the CDC and the Federal Food and Drug Administration. They have a mandatory system that when vaccines are given, if there's an adverse event, it is mandatory that those are reported. So out of the six million doses that were given, they had six doses that were, or six cases where there was an adverse event. And an adverse event is a serious event, it's not just somebody saying I'm having a panic attack, but it's a serious event. But that's six out of six million and one individual died in Virginia, you know, and that's, that's really a shame. But to put that in context, though, that there are six million people in Maryland as well and over eight thousand have died. So of the, so one in six million who received the vaccine have died. Where it is a one in seven hundred and fifty chance of dying in Maryland without, if you don't have the vaccine. One out of seven hundred and fifty. I know that people, you know, they're hesitant because they think, oh, well, this just shows that the vaccine is dangerous and that's not the truth, the truth is that, you know, they have an abundance of caution because, you know, they, they want to make sure that it is safe and that's why we've had this pause. I believe that pause will, you know, they're meeting on Friday and I believe that they'll probably approve that because the risk is just so low. But it's not unlike the people who are afraid to fly on an airplane where it's been proven that it's the most dangerous part of a trip, if you're flying, is driving your car to the airport. You're much more likely to die in that car than you are flying and we're much more likely to die in an automobile wreck than flying, but there's a lot of people that just have a fear of flying. So what we're going to try to be doing in the next few weeks also is really trying to reduce some of that hesitancy. We're going to be doing more educational activities to really help people understand get an, and really understand what the vaccine is all about in order that they'll be able to make an informed decision for themselves. Because we believe that a lot of people are not getting the vaccine just because they don't have the right information. So we'll be doing that and with that, I'll ask if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Bob, are there any questions?
Bob, the vaccination site that's going to be set up at GCC Technologies, which vaccine would have, the Moderna?
It will be the Moderna the first week and it'll probably be the Moderna the second week also. But if the Johnson and Johnson is approved, originally when that's, when we started negotiating to get that in, they wanted to have it be a single-dose clinic and so there's a possibility that it might be a single dose. But we'll just have to wait and see on that. I should mention that, that we have some supply of the Johnson and Johnson. When we had those, we had over almost two hundred appointments that were filled that when we had to, we had to stop, we contacted all those individuals and about half of those decided they wanted the Moderna vaccine. There's some people that they just prefer the Johnson and Johnson, they preferred some because they just want to get one shot instead of two.
So if they get their first shot there, will they get their second, the follow-up shot a month later somewhere else?
That's, that's correct, they will. But I also want to emphasize that, you know, the Health Department is able to give the follow-up shots. You know, we've had some people who have come to our clinics who have gotten their vaccine somewhere else and that location may not, may have been difficult. We had somebody that just, that signed up. They went to Hagerstown to get their first vaccine because they had the more availability there, but they wanted to get their second vaccine here and so we were able to give them that second vaccine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Bob, thank you very much, as always, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next order of business on our agenda, we have a couple of proclamations. The first proclamation is for the National Day of Prayer and we do have some of our pastors and preachers from the county here today to receive this, which we certainly appreciate. The proclamation for the National Day of Prayer, Love, Life and Liberty, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas we are richly blessed to have by law a national day of prayer in our country each year and whereas leaders of our nation have relied upon the power of prayer throughout American history. Whereas throughout our nation's history, leaders have urged citizens of faith to pray for our land and those who defend our freedoms at home and abroad. For many, prayer is an important part of the daily lives and today we join people across our country in uniting in a national day of prayer. Now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May sixth, two thousand and twenty-one as a day of prayer in Garrett County and do commend this observation to all of our citizens. In witness whereof, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, set our hands and cause the seal of Garrett County, Maryland to be affixed this twentieth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one by the order of Commissioners Heimball, Titchnell, and myself. And Pastor Bar, Pastor Crowell, if you guys would come forward, we'll present this to you.
Is it going to be appropriate to take a photo?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, why don't you guys come on up and
Thank you.
I might pop my mask off for the picture.
You are? I don't care.
Do whatever you want, you're vaccinated.
I had my shots.
So have we.
Yeah, me too.
Make sure you're small. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you all very much and we are going to do it the world again at
Okay.
St. Paul's and we invite you all to come, in fact, you're probably going to get a personal invitation to come be a part of the service.
Excellent, thank you all very much. Okay, and the next proclamation is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have some ladies here from Social Services to receive this. Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation, April twenty twenty-one, whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Garrett County. Whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional and physical abuse and neglect. Whereas Garrett County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas due to the combined efforts of the Garrett County Department of Social Services, the State's Attorney's Office, the Garrett County Sheriff's Department and the Maryland State Police, a memorandum of understanding has been signed, committing to the pursuit of a local child advocacy center. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and a business community. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Garrett County and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening communities in which we live. In witness whereof, we, the County Commissioners of Garrett County, have hereunto set our hands and caused the seal of Garrett County to be affixed here to this document this twentieth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one. Signed by Commissioners Heimball, Titchnell, and myself. Ladies, if you would come up.
You want Kevin to take a picture?
And thank you guys for all that you do and your help in
Thank you so much.
Prevention.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You better check and make sure you got a good picture.
We'll double check, thanks a lot.
Okay, moving right along, the next order of business, we do have a resolution to adopt. This resolution is in regard to Garrett County Tax Sale Date and Time, it is Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one. Whereas Article and Annotated Code of Maryland empowers the county to set the date and time of a tax sale. Board of County Commissioners, Garrett County, in accordance with provisions of the Act, does hereby set the date and time of the county tax sale to be held as an online auction at garret dot Maryland tax sale dot com, the auction site, as the following. And this will be up on, you'll be able to find this on our website as well if you're interested in this. Registration opens Tuesday, June the first at ten o'clock AM. Registration closes Friday, June eighteenth at noon. New this year, you cannot bid unless you're registered by June eighteenth. There will be a hundred dollar registration fee that will be refunded back to you whether you bid or not, so it's a hundred dollars upfront to establish the relationship and then that hundred dollars for everyone will be refunded. That is new, so I want to make sure to mention that. The registration fee is due Friday, June eighteenth by four o'clock. Tax sale bidding opens Monday, June twenty-first at ten AM and closes Friday, June twenty-fifth. Bidding closes in five property batches beginning at ten AM and then at ten thirty, eleven, eleven thirty AM and noon. And then payments are due Friday, June twenty-fifth by four o'clock PM. And are there any questions about that or any comments?
Just one, Kevin, is that information available on the county website?
Yes.
The hours and the days and everything?
The whole, the entire?
Okay, thank you.
All of this information will be available at the Garrett County website.
Published in the paper.
And will be published in the paper. Any other questions or comments? So having explained that, is there a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one?
Make a motion to adopt it.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we also have a couple of resolutions here in regard to the amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan, which we had a public hearing on in our last meeting. There were no public comments in regard to that public hearing. The two-week comment period is now closed and we'll submit Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two. Resolution, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, pursuant to Section nine dash six four eight of the Environment Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, approving the creation of the Rosedale Sewer Service Area and making certain legislative findings in connection therewith. Garrett County Department of Public Utilities has recommended that the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, the governing body of the Garrett County Sanitary District, consider creation of the Rosedale Sewer Service Area as depicted on a plat attached heretofu and incorporated herein. Section nine dash six four eight of the Environment Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, provides that the governing body of the county hold a public hearing to consider creation of the proposed service area. The Board held a public hearing on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, in room two oh nine of the courthouse in Oakland, Maryland to consider the creation of the proposed service area. Notice of public hearing having been published on March eleventh and March eighteenth in Republican, a newspaper of general circulation in Garrett County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland. The Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, finds creation of the Rosedale Sewer Service Area is necessary for the existing future health, safety and welfare of the public in general and is feasible financially and from an engineering standpoint. Therefore, the Board concurs with the recommendation of the Garrett County Department of Public Utilities to create the Rosedale Sewer Service Area based upon legislative findings set forth in this resolution and after considering the views expressed at the public hearing held on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one and comments received as part of the hearing record, the Board approves the creation of the Rosedale Sewer Service Area as depicted on the attached map. This resolution shall be effective upon its adoption and the county administrator shall immediately file and execute a copy of this resolution in plat with the Court for Garrett County, Maryland, and shall cause the title of this resolution, which constitutes a fair summary thereof, to be recorded among the land records of Garrett County, Maryland. Questions, comments? Hearing none, based on this information and the lack of public comment and the recommendation of DPU, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next resolution is also tied to the recommendations of the Department of Public Utilities in regard to amendments to the Garrett County Water and Sewer Master Plan. Again, public hearing, last meeting, again, no public comments received. This one, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash three. The Garrett County Department of Public Utilities has recommended that the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, the governing body of Garrett County Sanitary District Incorporated, consider a proposed change to the boundaries of the Deep Creek Lake Water Service Area to include the following areas and as also depicted on maps attached heretofu and incorporated herein. Those areas would be Paradise Heights Road, Pizel Road, two six six one Glendale Road, eight six nine Mountain View Drive, Maple Street in Friendsville, three nine eight Fairview Church Road, ten nineteen Madison Street and Mountain Lake Park. Any questions on that? Comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash three?
Make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another resolution. This one a little bit shorter for some road, road names from the GIS Division, these are new roads in a new development. This resolution, RN twenty-one dash one, whereas Article forty-one of the Annotated Code of Maryland empowers the county to provide for an enhanced nine eleven emergency telephone system. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County has formally adopted the Garrett County Address Ordinance as the initial step to enhance nine one one system. And whereas the ordinance requires the establishment of the Garrett County Road Name Index that shall include the names of all streets and/or roads within the county. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners have duly adopted said Garrett County Road Name Index, now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Garrett County Commissioners does hereby adopt the following changes to road names within the county to be included on the Garrett County Road Name Index. Tax map thirty-three, the new road name, and there is no former road name as this is the new road, is Freedom Drive. And on tax map thirty-three dash forty-two, again, no former name, new name for a new road is Freedom Ridge. So we'll have a new county, we'll have a new road in the county named Freedom Drive and a second new road named Freedom Ridge. Any questions on that? If there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution number RN twenty-one dash one?
Make a motion to adopt them.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the next item of business on the agenda is some bid awards. We have two of them, we'll take them both at the same time. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir, the first one is bid twenty-one dash oh four oh eight CS Crush Stone Aggregate for the Roads and Solid Waste Departments. We received five bids from Maryland Minerals, Georges Creek Stone, Keystone Mine, Allegheny Aggregate and Fairfax Concrete. The Purchasing Department is recommending that based on the bid prices, the location of the project and the hauling cost, each bid will be evaluated and purchased in the best trenches of the county from one of the five bidders' names. So the stone cost, also the total cost for a stone to be used in projects is the sum of the bid price and the hauling cost. So the Roads Division and Solid Waste will determine which plant to purchase the product on based on their location of the job.
All right, let's, are there any questions on that? All right, and we'll go ahead and take the second bid along with that.
The second bid is bid number twenty-one dash oh four oh eight Plumbing Services. This is for emergency plumbing services for the county. The two bids were received. Biko Enterprises Incorporated a rate of seventy dollars per hour for labor plus fifteen percent material markup and Rush Services at seventy-eight dollars per hour and twenty percent material markup. The Purchasing Department recommended awarding the bid to the parent low bidder, Biko Enterprises, at a rate of seventy dollars per hour for labor and a fifteen percent markup for materials.
All right, are there any questions on that? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the proposed bid awards for the Crush Stone Aggregates and the Plumbing Services?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is Garrett County Department of Economic Development, the Appalachian Regional Commission, known as A R C Project Presentations. And Cindy, I'll turn it over to you.
Today we have three projects considered for grant funding from the Appalachian Regional Commission project. We have Garrett College with their IT Infrastructure Project Five. We have the Maryland Salem Children's Trust. We have the Maryland Salem Children's Trust for the Residential Educational Program. And we also have the county's Oakland Trout Run Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant as well that will be presented. Today, if we still have her online, we have Dallas Willette from Garrett College, who's the Dean of Business and Finance, here to speak about their project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners in Garrett County. Let me share my screen here and I'll have a who's disabled?
This screen.
I'm actually getting an error when I'm trying to share my screen.
We're working on fixing you up here, Dallas.
No problem. Okay, so I should be able to do it now, there we go.
There we go.
So you're able to see my screen then?
Yes, we can see it, yes.
Great. Okay. So I'd like to thank you, first, thank you for giving me the opportunity to briefly, briefly discuss the IT Infrastructure Project at Garrett College. So before discussing the fiscal year 22 funding request, I wanted to first do just a quick summary of the project and A R C's huge impact on its success. As you can see from this slide, the college has greatly appreciated the A R C funding over the last three fiscal years and has been able to upgrade, improve, and replace critical IT infrastructure that has greatly benefited not only our students, but our faculty and staff and the community members served by the college. Some of the main upgrades included or planned for are the improvements to the network access and connection speeds, server infrastructure needs, computing for classroom and faculty, our internet bandwidth, and firewalls to support all the increased demand. The project has been critical in allowing Garrett College to achieve its mission and provide an accessible, quality, and comprehensive educational experience in both traditional and non-traditional settings. It has also allowed us to support the community in which Garrett College serves. As I'm sure you're all aware, an up-to-date IT infrastructure is a critical component in education in this ever-changing world. The college is looking for ways to continue to develop this infrastructure to be able to adapt, which brings me to the fiscal year 22 funding request. So the college's funding request for fiscal year 22 is made up of two main priorities. Number one is shown on this slide, which is upgrading and replacing the college's server uninterruptible power supply units, or UPSs for short. And these UPSs are critical for the infrastructure to have adequate support to function at its full capacity. The college's server is the core behind every technology the college offers. So upgrading these UPSs is essential to reduce and minimize data interruption for our students and our community. The next slide lays out the college's second priority, which is upgrading and replacing the phone system infrastructure on campus. The phone system is currently end-of-life and currently does not have the capabilities for enhanced features. The phone system is a critical infrastructure component, and this upgrade will allow the college to add more features and increase our communication between all parties, including faculty, staff, students, and the community. But I told you quickly, briefly, so I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to present, and I welcome any questions or comments.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Dallas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dallas. The second presentation is from Ms. Connie Myers, H R Director of Maryland Salem Children's Trust. I went ahead and brought just a copy of the slides and I too am going to be relatively brief. And just in correction, my title's not H R, it's Executive Director of Salem, so I appreciate that. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for this great opportunity for us to even submit the proposal or the project description and then to bring it to your attention. So what I wanted to do today was to come and just kind of share our vision for this partnership that Salem is so blessed to have right now. What we are going to be doing, this is two not-for-profits that have come together. I don't know if you're familiar with Maryland Salem Children's Trust, but we've been around for 41 years. And Grafton Integrated Health Network has been around for 60. Their corporate office is in Winchester, Virginia. And just to kind of give you a little bit of insight about who we are, Maryland Salem Children's Trust was created based on, maybe the next slide, Kevin, if you don't mind. There we go. And you can, you can do it either way. You can do it that way or you can put it on the slideshow either way. It's fine. But in 1979, the Maryland Salem Children's Trust was created and founded on Christian principles. And it was, its main focus was to provide a family education, therapy, and just a stable environment for children and youth who had been abused or neglected. And we even had some other, some other youth, Department of Judicial Justice and things like that that found Maryland Salem Children's Trust as a home for them, for them. We have actually served hundreds, close to 1,000 actually, youth over the 41 years that we've been in existence. And coincidentally, right about the time that COVID hit, we had to make the announcement that because of financial unsustainability, we were going to have to close our residential and educational programs. So that, that was kind of a perfect storm, if you will, because of COVID-19 and the restrictions that came down with that. And then with our declining enrollment and we, we weren't able to get a sufficient break from the state at that point that that actually allowed us to manage our operational costs. So we had to close in June 2020. And then unfortunately, most of our technology has been so outdated, most is obsolete. And because of the rising costs of operations, those, unfortunately, those technologies have been pushed to the back burner. And and then we began talk, partnership talks with Grafton in May of 2020. It was kind of ironic how they even heard about our closing and how, and they contacted us actually to begin some partnership talking. We sent out, we sent out a notice to all the social services and juvenile justice organizations in the state because we were closing. We had to have the youth relocated back to their subsequent counties. And Grafton is very close to Washington County, so that's how they actually heard about our closing. And they began, they contacted us right away. We've been having contact talks since then. So just a little bit about Grafton. They've been a provider of therapeutic residential and educational services with complex disabilities for more than 60 years. They have served more than 3,000 clients each year. They employ 750 employees between five locations. And they are licensed by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services of Virginia and also the Virginia Department of Education. They're accredited by Cognia and CARF. And what those two organizations do with this accreditation is to promote continuous improvement. So we will be joining those accreditation bases when we, when we start up. And they, they take a trauma-informed approach for working with the children. And of course, what we, what our vision is going to do is to provide services to intellectual disability, youth of developmental delay and/or autism spectrum, mostly autism spectrum. And from what we have, have learned, children and youth with autism is a growing population. So we are so excited to be able to have this partnership. And, and basically what will happen is, it's not a merger, it's a partnership. And what will happen is Grafton will, they will, they will replicate their successful program on Maryland Salem Children's Trust campus. So it's a pretty aggressive goal, but it is our intent to try and open by September 1. And so the next slide is, this is, this is Grafton's Integrated System of Care. And so you see everything in a circle. The two pink ones are really the ones that they're, they're going to be replicating on our, on our campus. So we'll have group homes and we will be having also day schools for surrounding region that might have children with autism but wouldn't necessarily have to have residential services. So, but the reason that they have it in, in the grid that they have it is each one of those training treatments are as important as the next. I'll take the next slide. Thank you. So these are their two philosophies that they try and integrate into all of the programs. The foundation of five is a recently implemented clinical approach. It's called the Foundation of Care and it incorporates evidence-based treatment in which all staff receive training that is shared cohesively. So each one of these, these elements of this model are as important as the rest, you know, to be kind. Use the community to its fullest extent. That's one reason why they were so excited about the possibility of coming to Salem because of our outdoor possibilities of making outdoor in classrooms and things like that. The other system, Ukero, is a trademark model that they've come up with. And it's a crisis management system that allows the program to virtually eliminate the use of restraint, which is very important for us because that was one of the things when, when we had our other youth, our other programs, restraint was, was such an integral part. And sometimes it did not have the best results. You know, when you have to restrain a young man or a young lady several times a day, it, it, it creates negative, negative things. So this program is considered a promising practice and it's been adapted by more than 300 organizations in 35 states. So they have taken this, this model of behavior modification actually nationally. So the next slide talks about the use of an electronic health record. What they use right now is Wellagent and it supports the clinical, the clinical team in each component of their program. And absolutely essential, one of the reasons why I requested, you know, the opportunity to, for consideration of infrastructure is this very important need to increase our, our infrastructure and technology. So the next slide just gives a little bit of how they, how they do their data warehouse and some of the things that it, that the ER, the electronic health record is used for is to track behavior data, to evaluate treatment interventions, and determine when course correction in the treatment plan is needed. And it's used to coordinate across disciplines, exceed regulatory outcomes, and ensure the clients receive effective and durable solutions to their challenges. So what they do is they take their electronic health record and they integrate the data and put it into benchmarks and outcomes. And, and then they use that for continuous improvement in the program. Additionally, what we're hoping to do is to be able to use their existing electronic, electronic health record for employee clock on. So we think we can make that work. Of course, it's all dependent on increasing our broadband and things like that. So the next slide is education. And of course, the way that education is dispensed anymore is the use of smartboards and iPads, computers, and smart devices. This population of special learning needs youth is so much more dependent on these assistant, assistive devices. And just to give you a little bit of story, and I don't want to prolong this, but last year when COVID hit, of course, you know, the state required that all public, and because we follow MSDE procedures and, and schedules and everything, even as a non-public school, we were, we were mandated to close. But unfortunately, what that meant for Salem was they had to stay in their houses. We couldn't receive visitors, they couldn't go anywhere, and they were supposed to be remanded to their, to their house because we couldn't have school. And, and we don't have connectivity to the houses. So what that did was we kind of sat down with the education director and we, we made some modifications which required us to contact MSDE and it required us to contact the Health Department and say, we have to meet in our school. That's the only place that we have right now, where we have internet, where we have any kind of connectivity. And, and of course, it was kind of outside the parameters of the mandate, but they allowed us to do that. So what would happen though with, with Grafton coming on board is they are so much more invested in the, the need for good connectivity. Right now, we have New Beam, we are talking about getting Comcast down there. That, that will help with the infrastructure. And and there's a lot of things that, you know, that we'll need that, that require good connectivity. So, and this could not, this PPD, I appreciate Cindy and Kim Durst sending this notice to us because it couldn't have come at a better time. And so I so appreciate, you know, the opportunity to even come and, and say thank you for, for even the opportunity to submit this. So the last slide, and I'll, and I will, really will wrap this up. I'm sorry about this. But we, we put in the request, ARC Investment Goal 3, which is critical infrastructure and investing in the infrastructure, State Objective 3.2, to continue the development of modern, modern communication network and the State Strategy of 3.2.2, developing support, maintain infrastructure for broadband. So what I kind of wanted to do with this last slide is not only to show what a great contribution this partnership of Grafton and Salem, what it would do for the youth that, that have autism, but also to what it would do to Garrett County. Because, and you know, as you know, when we closed, we had to lay off about 50 personnel. We're anticipating bringing those back on, not all at one time, but we're going to transition the jobs back in. And we really want to integrate these youth back into the community a lot more than what we were allowed to with Salem, which will, you know, encourage parents and families to come and visit. And I just think it will be great. I think it's a great opportunity, I'm excited about it. You know, I've talked to Paul a couple of times. It will, it will be a wonderful thing for the community, a wonderful thing for the, for the children. And And I appreciate any consideration that you might give to us for some, some ARC funding.
Thank you very much, Connie. Any questions?
Just real quick, Cindy, this is area development money?
Correct.
So it requires fifty, fifty match?
Correct, correct.
So they're providing the match for the money then, or?
We are.
Okay, yes. And do you service a specific geographical area, like within a certain radius, or just anywhere that Grafton has?
Actually, what has happened, Grafton has served children and youth nationally. They even had them from California. But what we're anticipating is Grafton in Winchester currently has some Maryland residents that we're anticipating transitioning them up first and then expanding. And the superintendent of the Myers-Salem Area Schools has already come to see me, you know, to say that they feel that they have some children that might be able to be a part of our day program. So we anticipate getting, you know, spreading that word out a little bit more. We were able to get our announcement out, so we're ready to move forward now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Most, most of your workers that you had there before will be coming back, you think?
I, I don't know, I wouldn't say most, Larry, I would say some, some. Some have already found other jobs. I've already gotten several calls from, from former employees that would like to be considered. So Grafton very generously is going to be helping with some H R to begin with. So I really want to capitalize on their expertise in, in getting good quality employees. But I know that some will be returning.
That's right. Connie, Salem was under Board of Directors.
Correct.
Do you have a local Board of Directors, or does everything flow through Grafton now?
No, actually, our, our local Board of Directors is still very involved and have been involved with the talks right from the beginning. And with this partnership, their board is involved. And so what we hope to have is more of a, a conversation between the two boards, the, the two entities, certainly working very much hand in hand. I've been working with some of the personnel with, from Grafton since last, last summer. And we've finally been able to see kind of the light at the end of the tunnel. Tomorrow, I'll be going to Winchester for some training, next week, back to Winchester. At some point, I'll be going to a couple of the other sites in Virginia that, that have slightly different programs. So just to get a broad, you know, overview of what we need to do to bring a, a successful program to Salem.
This is great news.
Oh, I'm excited, yeah, very excited.
Alright, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thirdly, and lastly, the Oakland Trout Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Utility Conveyance Engineering will combine county-owned and operated trout-run wastewater treatment plant at one-one-five-six Norse Welch Road to the town of Oakland's wastewater treatment plant to form a regional wastewater treatment plant at twenty-seven Oakland Rosedale Road in Oakland. It'll be replaced with an enhanced nutrient removal system utilizing a sequencing batch reactor to meet requirements of the Maryland Department of Environment. The trout-run facility is currently relying on a lagoon-based liquid treatment system with ultraviolet disinfection and no solid waste processing, discharging into used three P waters, the Little Yakagany River, protected for trout and public water supply. Engineering outcomes include improved infrastructure for residents and businesses. And also, I'd like to express appreciation to Amy Jacobs, the Economic Development Planner for Tri-County West Council for Western Maryland, who's taken a lead in the regional ranking for A R C funding and the annual updating of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And also, like to express gratitude to David Cotton, the Director of the Western Maryland Regional Office of the Maryland Department of Planning, with his role as State Program Manager for the Appalachian Regional Commission. So these concludes the three projects considered for Appalachian Regional Commission funding.
Alright, thank you very much, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, just a couple of real quick announcements. The next public meeting will be Monday, May the third at four o'clock here at Port House. That'll be followed, our second meeting in May, which will be Tuesday, May eighteenth. We'll actually be doing that meeting again at four o'clock at Garrett College. And that will be followed up then at six o'clock at the college auditorium for the F Y twenty-twenty-two budget. So we do that, obviously, every year, that, that hearing will be May eighteenth, six o'clock at Garrett College Auditorium, which will be preceded, same day, four o'clock at the college as well for our regular. Are there any other announcements or questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.